This is a follow-up to the Clay Street Health and Safety meetings we've had, both the public meeting back in January and the follow-up with facilitators. I think our model worked, though it was a little bit crazy at the time, to surface and prioritize what those greatest challenges were to the neighborhood, businesses, stakeholders, and this is a follow-up to the meeting we had that some were able to attend, maybe not all, with the city manager and the mayor. I know we have representatives of the Salinas Police Department with us, and I think community development is coming, which should be good. You know, so I sent out a little bit of an agenda. I'm not sure if everybody saw it, but with that bit of a background, I think the goal in the next 45 minutes or an hour is to check in on some of the more significant places that are of importance, I guess you could say, as we've looked at, again, health and safety in and around Clay Street. So one of the things I do want to do is just a matter of kind of roll call, if you will. So a chance to unmute yourself, maybe offer your name and your organization. I'll go ahead and call you out, and we'll just kind of start at the top with Gabe Carvey. If you're here, maybe your name, your handle, your organization.
So Gabe Carvey from Salinas Police Department, currently assigned to the homeless outreach team.
Great, thank you very much, Gabe. And then Steve Lundin, if you'd like.
Steve Lundin, pastor at First United Methodist Church and the Neighborhood Services Center.
Thank you very much. And then Mr. Ortiz, I see you there.
Andy Ortiz, outreach supervisor for Interim Incorporated.
Thank you very much. And I think, well, obviously Casey's there, you want to say hi?
Hi, Casey Powers, Division Director of Program Services with Interim.
Great, thank you very much, glad you're here. And Donna, I think you're on the call as well.
Hi, Donna Gossips, just a homeowner.
Just a homeowner, but a very important one. Well, thank you for being on here and representing the neighborhood, that's important. I see that Maria is on here as well. I think so, she may be muted. I don't know if I want to unmute her, or she can unmute. I don't know, if you're tracking us, Maria, are you there?
She's tried to unmute, but she can't, we can't hear her.
Okay. Oh, she was unmuted, and then she was muted again. Wait, there you had it. You're good, Maria. Okay, well, we'll come back because I think she and her agency have an important piece in all of this. Maria and I have been on a couple of Zoom calls related to homelessness and such, and that's Downtown Streets team, so I'm very glad that she's with us. I see Roberto's on the call. Roberto, do you want to say hi?
Absolutely, hello, Roberto Felice, Assistant Chief, Salinas PD, in charge of operations.
Can you say that in Italian?
Certamente, Roberto Felice, Vice Questore, Responsabile delle Operazioni.
Perfect, all right. Marisol, are you with us?
Hi, yes, my name is Marisol, I am the program director with Macomb, part of Interim as well.
Awesome, well, we really appreciate you taking the time to join in this. Kind of going down the list, I see Pat Donahue's with us. Pat, do you want to say hi?
I just want to say hi and glad to be here, and I'm with First United Methodist Church.
Excellent, we appreciate your joining us, thank you, Pat. There was a couple of other folks, there's a 303 number, I'm not sure exactly who that might be. If you want to unmute, you can say hi. Anybody with a 303 number, you want to say hi?
Yeah, this is Robert Walenzine, I'm with the Central Coast YMCA.
Oh, hey, there you go, hi, Robert, thank you very, very much, appreciate that. And then there was a 770 number.
Hi there, it's Amy Graeme with Central Coast YMCA.
Oh, great, thank you very much, Amy, I'm so glad you could join us, okay.
Thank you.
Cool, okay, so I think we're rolling there with introductions, I gave a little bit of the background. At this point in time, we want to check in on safety and security in and around Clay Street. There's several stakeholders that I listed there, so I'll start with Salinas Police Department, Assistant Chief Roberto Felice, if you want to just speak at all generally to, you know, homelessness in the downtown vicinity, Clay Street, you know, anything that you want to, you know, just capture kind of broadly, and then we could move to the hot officer. So Assistant Chief, would you like to say anything?
Well, thank you, Mr. McShane, actually, what I'm going to do, I'm going to let the hot officer speak because we're going to be saying the same thing, so you get to hear it just once. But thank you for giving me the chance.
Sure, absolutely, so Officer Carvey?
Yeah, so this has been a very trying time. The last eight weeks have seen a year's worth of work in trying to maintain a level of cleanliness and order in the homeless communities go awry. To say that we haven't been working hard would be an understatement, we're working very hard at combating these and addressing the quality of life issues, both in the downtown area and the other impacted communities in the city that are dealing with the results of the homeless community. Unfortunately, Downtown Streets has been down as well due to the COVID. Police departments are a funny business, we deal with laws, and so where other people might be able to skirt what's going on, we have to follow the letter of the law as put out by Dr. Moreno and the other authorities in this. Part of the shelter in place order is that the homeless people, homeless community is categorically exempt and also cannot be moved or cleaned during this time of shelter in place. So it's been a very difficult time, and we have a ton of work to do when this is lifted. We are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to quality of life issues. Both of the assistant chiefs and the chief are dedicated to quality of life issues in Salinas and things that are impacting our communities, so we encourage anyone to call. We may not respond immediately, but I guarantee you, we will get there and handle any of these issues.
Great, thank you, Officer Carvey. Anything specific you can share to downtown, and specifically in and around Clay Street, you know, that you've engaged or heard in briefings, you know, whether it be, you know, through the department or through other channels, as to any sort of, you just issues as to violence or crime?
So crime and violence in the city is down dramatically during this time of shelter in place, statistically. That's not to say that there aren't pockets of issues that go on. I think the police department would join me in tipping our hat to the work that Pastor Lundin and his staff have done at the Methodist Church in providing an environment that both abides by the Health Department guidelines, the CDC guidelines, all the while helping a very vulnerable part of our community, especially in this time. Our hats are off to that, specifically to the Clay Street area, to the First Methodist Church and what they're doing.
Okay, well, as we cycle through, we'll get feedback as to what else may have been observed, you know, by other stakeholders, and, you know, one of the other key stakeholder groups has been private security. You know, Jason Patterson is the commander for First Alarm, and he actually had an emergency medical procedure that came up, so he and I touched bases, and I can just very briefly cover for him, and depending on if he's able to call in, one of the supervisors in the downtown overlay district, Tyler, will try to call in. But generally speaking, Allied has bought First Alarm. The transition is taking place between now and June 1. What that means for downtown, whether you are, say, Bank of America, or SCCIA, or the John Steinbeck Library, is 95% of the contracts will be under one contract provider. So that's a good thing from the standpoint of information flow and such. They have some adjustments that they're working through. You know, Jason was very clear to say that they don't even have an office, you know, yet, per se. They're just getting their communications equipment, you know, kind of figured out between the two agencies, but those things will be worked out, and my experience with many of the officers that have come over, you know, is very positive, so, you know, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. You know, in speaking with Tyler in the last week and with Jason, similarly to what Officer Carvey reported, calls for service haven't been as frequent, but they have seen an uptick in the last week. Certainly, a number of individuals and some of the, call it, more problematic people that, you know, are frequenting downtown and are suffering from homelessness or other mental health issues. So I know that one thing that Tyler emphasized, and one thing that is of great curiosity, and I do hope that later on the call, is that mental health outreach component. So to Interim and to the work that Downtown Streets team and the hot officer are doing, I think that'll be of interest as we get further down the call. I know that there's been other, call it, security efforts, whether they're professional private security or professional police officers, so I want to get to those reports as well. I want to really acknowledge the patience and the hard work that the YMCA has done. They have a, you know, childcare facility that they're operating that, if it's not at capacity, I know that a lot of people are getting sent that direction. So I'd like to hear from either Amy or Robert, from the YMCA perspective, as to what are you doing for security and what are you seeing? So I don't know which one would be more appropriate, but maybe someone from the YMCA?
I'll chime in here, Steve, and then Robert can back me up on something that I may admit. We do have parking lot attendants that are there for the safety of the YMCA members, just to keep an eye out for any crime-related things happening around the Y. As you stated, we are doing essential childcare for essential workers, and it poses a very big strain on us because of the social distancing and facing with the kids and the sanitation and stuff. And we do have a particular gentleman who housed himself across the street in the recycling bins that we had a very difficult time dealing with, trying to get help with him, to not be there, and that has been a big challenge for us because we do have kids there, and we want to make sure they're safe. So it's not for us about homelessness, it's about, it's about crime around the Y, because obviously the Y here is about people as well.
You know, building off of what was talked about at the last meeting, there is the church next door to the Y and Central Coast College. You know, can you speak to the YMCA's foot patrol effort? I mean, I know that the parking lot attendants, you know, kind of go above and beyond, and do you have any reports, say, in the last two or three months? I mean, I know COVID-19 kind of throws everything off, but is there anything you can report as to incidents? I mean, there's obviously the one problematic guy, which I know that STD, you know, had engaged at least on a couple of occasions, but can you speak to anything else?
I can say that it's getting better, obviously, this is just, this is a very strange time for us. The YMCA is absolutely leasing the churches property next to us and the central college. There is a group of females only that are in that college, and so sometimes they feel scared or not safe. And so the YMCA has taken on a part to help them with that, as well as the church. And so, Robert, do you, since you're there day in and day out, would you like to add anything to all of this, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Amy captured a lot of it. We've had probably, you know, 10 to 15 individuals that have been on the YMCA or the surrounding properties, either drinking some alcohol or doing whatever they would choose, but our parking lot attendants, along with our leadership staff at the Salinas Y, have been making phone calls to the police, where we've had some very timely responses that have helped us, or we've asked them ourselves to please leave the property, and they've been doing so.
That's good to hear, and I think, maybe I'll just leave it at, you know, and maybe Officer Carvey, if you want to chime in on best practices, you know, evidence, right? Photographs, video, but you don't want to, you don't want to engage, you know, someone that could be a potential problem, anything you'd add, Officer Carvey?
Yeah, so absolutely, the personal safety of your staff is really important to us. We would rather send in our guys if that's possible. Obviously, that's on a case-by-case basis, and your staff will have to determine the level of threat there. The other part of this that goes to helping everyone is to contact dispatch and make a record of the call, even if the problem gets solved, you can always call back. Even if, you know, at least put it on the computer-headed dispatch system so that there's a record, so that when we go back to look at this, we don't have to guess at how many calls for service, we don't have to guess at where the resources go. So it's really imperative that even if your staff is going to go handle a problem that they think is a low-threat level, if you place a call in there, a description of the person, at least then if it does go escalate, the problem escalates, but at least we have some information to go on, and it as well as helps us track our resource allocation to those areas. So it's always important to document these things, even if it's just a simple call to the non-emergency number.
Very helpful, Officer Carvey. One other question for you, and this has come up a couple of times. Are you or the department, you know, again, timing, available for training or for a check-in? I mean, obviously, the YMCA has their parking lot attendant team, and as we'll hear from the First United Methodist Church shortly, they have a team that's doing some self-p patrol. You know, are you available, and should we allow, get your number out for those sorts of assistance? Or how would you handle that?
Absolutely, at any time that anybody wants some security help with that and opinions, then we have a vast array of knowledge within the police department, of different trainers, and we would be more than ready and available to do anything that we can to ensure everybody's safety, absolutely.
And not to make, not to make this public, and you don't need to announce it now, but as a follow-up, it might be helpful to share your number with some of the staff as well, because I know that you've been very responsive to some of the homeless-specific issues, you know, the bad players, I guess is the way to put it.
Absolutely, I have a department cell phone, 484-4773, and short of writing it on a bathroom wall, you can share it with anybody that you wanted to.
All right, well, we'll keep it out of the restroom, thank you.
Hey, Steve?
Yeah, yeah, you're next, so, yeah, by all means.
I just wanted to say that, you know, we would be happy to get a call from someone at the YMCA if there's a specific individual that's causing problems. I would go down there, or we have a couple of our core volunteers that would be glad to go down. I'd be surprised if we didn't know who that, who the person was.
Yeah, and I think one of the takeaways is going to be that stronger relationship. In fact, in anticipation of this meeting, one of the things that the city manager had said was, you know, I want to make sure that the CEO, the YMCA, and the pastor connect. I know you guys did, and that's appreciated, and heck, I think you even offered to attend one of the board meetings, which we may not be there yet, but I think that stronger connection's good, I'll note that, so that there is that, that follow-up, thank you, Pastor.
And if it's hooked in with receiving food at our place, that can be a great motivator to get someone out of their parking lot.
That's very helpful, yeah, you have levers to help and manage and get better behavior and all of that, so thank you. And maybe at this point in time, given the agenda, would you like to comment on, you know, what you've seen from a safety and security standpoint? Speak to your hours, your census count on a daily basis, whether it's breakfast or lunch. You know, your improvements in security, you were at the last meeting, there was a lot of direction as to training, and even since then, I think with COVID-19, we've been in touch a little bit as to best practices. So maybe before you get to COVID-19, just speak to your census, what you're seeing, and what you've done since the last meeting to improve safety and security.
Okay, since, since the last meeting, we've installed security cameras on the Lincoln Avenue side and the San Luis porch side, and we've enclosed one and locked one porch area that was problematic. And next week, we're installing, we're putting in some fencing and gate around in our, to enclose our courtyard.
Oh, wow.
And the porch on, on San Luis.
Wow.
So that when we're closed, we're closed.
Wow.
As far as the last few weeks with COVID-19, we are open fewer hours to limit congregating as a group. All of our services, aside from two, are outside in the courtyard. We're doing our meals outside. People can come in to use our restrooms when we're open, and we have a hallway available for people to plug in and charge their phones or their ankle monitors. Aside from that, we're open from 7:00, 8:00 to 8:00 a.m. for breakfast, and then we close. We open from, at 11:00, from 11:00 to 1:00 for lunch. We distribute mail outside. Our art room is currently closed, our art and computer room, our clothes room is closed. We're getting people clothes just on an emergency basis. One of our core volunteers will go in and find people the things they need when there's an emergency. So we're scaled down quite a bit right now, and, and, and we're also scaled down, way down on volunteers, because a lot of our volunteers are seniors. And so what was typically about 80 volunteers a week is now about eight volunteers a week. Maybe it does, so that's, that's where we are right now. Our numbers are also down because a lot, or a good number of our people came to us from the Warming Shelter, which is quarantined right now, or from Victory Mission, which is quarantined right now. So we're probably about half in numbers. We, for breakfast in the morning, we have about 25, an average, I would say about an average of 25 meals that we serve. And at lunchtime, we have an average, we're serving an average of about 45 to 50 meals, which, so that's, that's way down from where we were three months ago.
Yeah, helpful, and as a point of reference, Victory Mission, I was in touch with Pastor Ken earlier this week, and their census count's at around 30. And as I think we've talked about Pastor Steve, there is very strict in-and-out and monitoring, whether it's the West Alisal or other shelters, okay? So keeping it moving, I do want to.
Oh, I, one other thing I just want to mention is, we are delighted that we're still continuing our partnership with Interim and have a caseworker with us there at the church, Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays right now.
Ah, okay.
And available at other times as well.
Well, we'll get to that, because I know that that was one of the key takeaways from the YMCA meeting, and so whether it's Andy or Casey, I'm just delighted that Interim is a part of this and an ongoing partner. So as to neighborhood and impacted neighborhood, I can confirm, at least it's been reported to me, that Allied and First Alarm continue to, and as part of the contract, patrol the surrounding neighborhood. It'd be interesting to confirm whether Robert or Amy have seen that, but this is a good transition to one of our neighborhood stakeholders, and that's Donna. So Donna, maybe you could just speak to your street and what you've observed since our last meeting. I know you had talked about getting a neighborhood group or a meeting off the ground, and COVID probably hasn't helped that, but if you want to comment to what you've observed and where you're at with organizing your neighborhood?
Um, the last meeting, towards the end there, I think after the meeting dismissed, we were, I was talking to, I think I was talking to Andy and then the security guy. People were supposed to call me and get ahold of me, I was, I passed my number along, and unfortunately, I know the security thing kind of shifted around, but nobody got ahold of me. It was like we were dropped.
Oh, boy.
It was like, you heard crickets. The uptick in homeless, unfortunately, the neighborhood is inundated.
Wow.
And it's people that I don't see on a regular basis, there knew, there was a family the other day. They were, they like to, well, they were charging their phones on an outlet of the old newspaper building here on Alisal, right by the Warming Shelter. They had found outlets, so they were using that. So I've actually had to deal with Salinas PD quite a few times, actually, for the disruption. I see the regular still, I know they're, they're here, but there's definitely an uptick in traffic. My security cameras are always going off, yeah, with people walking by. Luckily, nothing's been stolen since, I don't know, it's been maybe a few months since something's been stolen. But, yeah, we're a little concerned.
Right, well, you mentioned several things, so as a follow-up, I will definitely make a reconnection to the private security firm, because they've changed, I think, the neighborhood services component. They've got a prepackaged kind of rollout for neighborhood association or watch startups, so I'll make sure that we make that connection again. COVID obviously may have challenged that, and then Officer Carvey's availability helps with his cell number, that's real helpful. I know I've texted photos and making that connection. I don't know, Officer Carvey, is there anything you would share, anything you've observed as it relates? Because you're on Cayuga, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so Cayuga's not church, but right there and still impacted as a fringe, so.
Yes.
I don't know, anything, Officer Carvey, you'd want to say, or?
Well, just some of the basic stuff, report, 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 as well as please call me if there's a problem, if there's some way that we can find some other solutions to it. We will definitely work hard on it. This is my full-time job, so I'm available 24/7, please call me, and we can work on it. There are some less traditional ways that we can deal with this, as Pastor Lundin alluded to. Some of the threat of jail and fines and tickets don't work very often, but some other more creative solutions can be found.
Okay, um, let's see, Donna, when you say uptick, has that been since kind of COVID? Or how recent, did it go, did it drop after our meeting and our work? Because the.
It did.
Okay, the patrolling.
It did, but then, I just want to say, like, shortly after, it was all before the COVID stuff started.
Okay.
That the uptick started, so that was a little, a little concerning, that there was some new traffic around, around the neighborhood. And then the COVID happened, and then the traffic got a little more sketchy. I don't know if they were trying to avoid being seen in the daylight, I don't, there was a lot of night activity, it seemed, more so. Yeah, I, it's just, it's increased, which I wasn't expecting to happen since it's our meetings, but, um, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I can't say, I think during the day, you know, because the court's closed, the office across the way is closed, everybody's closed, the neighborhood's real quiet, so when there's noise, I hear it.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So I don't know, like. So I don't know, like, maybe I'm just noticing it more because it's quiet and I hear it, and it's always the same traffic. But I definitely know that there's new individuals that have moved into the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, well, you know, to Officer Carvey's point, you know, just the number of bad acts in the city being down, people are at home, they're watching. But I think there's some good takeaways there. Okay, I want to touch on street homeless outreach. And I think this is where we could fold in Intrum from a big-picture perspective. And then maybe even, maybe that's Casey and then Andy at a, you know, at a different level. And I don't know how Casey would want to reference the hot officer, because I know there's been some collaboration there. This was a major takeaway from our first and second meeting, so why don't I lead with that? Casey, if you just want to touch bases on, you know, what Intrum's doing as to mental health and diagnosis and your work between the city, the church, and the hot officer?
Yeah, so we've been, I'm going to let Andy speak more, since a couple of things have changed since our first meeting. One is that Andy is now the supervisor for our outreach team, which is great. We didn't have someone directly supervising that outreach team. And then Marisol here is now our program director that is overseeing that. Kevin is still a program director for McComb. He's just over a different piece of McComb. So we've had some management change, so that's, Marisol is here for that now. But I'll turn it over to Andy. But basically, overall, our contract here in Salinas is to have someone at the church. We actually have two different positions at the church. We have a counselor and we have a wellness navigator as well. So our wellness navigator is actually a peer position, that's someone who has experiences with the population that they're serving, and experience as one of the people who is in the population. And they do a lot of collaboration with, obviously with the church and with the library, when the library's open, and the police as well. So Andy, go ahead.
Yes, my name's Andy. I'm the outreach supervisor for Intrum's outreach program. Specifically in Salinas, we still have staff available. We have staff there Monday and Tuesdays and Wednesdays. However, following this week, it's going to switch a little bit, and that's something Pastor Steve and I will discuss tomorrow. Well, we'll have staff Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. I'm thinking also, just from hearing all the reports about different, like, timeframes, you might also see about maybe, you know, maybe having staff there at different times throughout the day, maybe not just in the morning or in the afternoon. So maybe we can catch clients a little bit easier and make connections. But we're still opening clients, we're still providing mental health treatment. We're still opening clients for FSP and getting them into shelter when possible. Yeah, and we're also still doing connections. It's a little bit hard, because all of our county shelters, as well as neighboring county shelters, are not accepting any new clients at this time. And a lot of our standard transitional housing programs outside of Intrum are also being closed at this time. So really, it's a little bit difficult. Besides Intrum and some county services, other programs, other nonprofits unfortunately have stopped for the most part, obviously due to COVID-19. So we're just trying to commit referrals and help people get essentially their basic needs met at the most basic level right now, given that a lot of services are closed.
Got it. Thank you, Andy. And again, the goal is to get people off the street. And especially those that suffer from mental wellness challenges as a follow-up to the murder, really, but other issues, okay?
Just one other thing, Steve, we have a little bit of access right now to motel rooms, just through some. And as many of you know, the governor has, that's been one of the strategies that the governor has brought down. So we're just starting to get some extra access to motel rooms. We, and we are utilizing them when appropriate and when possible for clients who are experiencing homelessness.
That's a new development since our last meeting, and that's helpful, that stabilization. And as Officer Carvey alluded to, you know, various tools, rather than just the threat of jail, to stabilize things, okay? Casey, should we turn it over to Marisol, or maybe she can, you know, again, comment as the program director from her perspective?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so I think Andy shared a lot of just of what's going on right now. As Andy shared, we are, we do have staff present. We continue to provide outreach, and as Casey mentioned, we do have some availability that we're working out with other agencies in regards to motels and working some of that out. And that will go, once again, based on the outreach that we're doing, the need, and just addressing some of the areas where our clients are needing some support in. Yeah.
Well, either Andy or Marisol, given your experience on site, can either of you comment as to what you're seeing? I mean, obviously, the pastor spoke to a lower census count on a daily basis. You know, again, this whole working group originated from a real increase in calls for service, issues with health and safety, loss of life, and, you know, huge issues that the YMCA was able to elaborate on as well. So can you speak to any of the, just the numbers you're seeing? And specifically to the Clay Street and Lincoln and the First United Methodist Church area?
Yeah, I think, you know, we definitely have seen a decrease in clients and a decrease in numbers, and that's countywide. Even in, you know, even in Monterey and even in other areas of Salinas, we've seen a decrease in clients. I think the other thing that we're also dealing with right now, that I'm sure a lot of you are aware of as well, so like, our most, and I don't like to use the word motivated or unmotivated, but our most active homeless clients that were able to get into shelters have stayed in shelters, right?
I see.
And then these clients, unfortunately, a lot of them are struggling with substance abuse, struggling with, you know, law enforcement issues. A lot of these individuals are the ones who are not able to get into shelter right away. So these are the ones that are still actively out on the street. I'm sure in some cases causing havoc, or, you know, being able to unmanage themselves. And unfortunately, like I said, because of restrictions, just from this pandemic that we're dealing with, these individuals are also getting the most difficult to engage with and keep as safe as we can. But it's still also understanding that there is still staff available. When these clients are ready to engage and ready to access treatment and services, they do have that option as well. But definitely right now, what we're seeing is a lot of the more difficult homeless population is the ones that kind of were left out, unfortunately.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I want to transition into first, to our Downtown Streets team, and then I want to open it up to other stakeholders, because I see Gail's on here, and I definitely want to hear more from some of the other people that are partners in all of this. You know, and maybe this is appropriate for you, Casey, as to how long this contract lasts and what we're looking at as, say, the governor or the county board loosens up the shelter in place order. So you're going to be around for a little while, so to speak. Can you speak to the contract and the goals of the contract with, you know, with the city and so forth? And you may even touch on working closer with law enforcement, the hot officer?
Yeah, so we have a couple of different contracts that kind of converge here. We have, Past is one of them, well, actually, the Past, yeah, so we have, yeah, on the city of Salinas, we have the City of Salinas contract, which is CASH, the CASH contract. Our piece of CASH is actually just that initial engagement piece. So really, what they're doing, what their job is, is to find people, get to know them, get to know them as well as they can. And that takes a lot of time, especially as Andy said. The people that they're working with are not necessarily in an engaging kind of mode. They want to get fed, they want to have some shelter, but to actually engage on mental health issues, maybe not. So that can be, that can be a real challenge for them. So the work that they do is a lot of trying to get people engaged. And then the goals of that contract really are just to move them along the spectrum of services. So our piece of that contract is to get people engaged and then pass them off to the next agency down the line, which is there to help them actually access more resources with the goal of getting them ultimately housed, right?
So what's the other contract you were saying that kind of converge in this?
So Andy, do you want to speak a little bit more to Juliana's role?
Yes, so with our City of Salinas contracts, we have two very specific. One is very specific to kind of downtown Salinas and then the library, right? And that's where we have, again, the two staff, the counselor and then the wellness navigator, who kind of outreach that area specifically. They're located at the church, located at the library, and they're designated there. They do outreach around that area. And then our other contract is with City of Salinas, and that is just specific for all of Salinas. So that is everything from East Beronda to Chinatown to, you know, another thing I'm thinking of, like, in South Maine, there's been a little bit of a resurgence of homeless people, obviously. So that's another area where they're doing it. And while they do interlap at times, they also do kind of keep their own case load separately. And with, the other thing too, that I think is really helpful for people to understand is that, so with the City of Salinas contract with regards to Chinatown, that is very specific to finding individuals who have a homeless, homeless individuals who have a mental health condition, who require intensive services like ours. With the library project, it can be anybody who needs any type of service, whether that is a referral to Cecil to get housing, whether that is a referral for a motel, whether that is, you know, rental assistance programs. That does not have to be a client who has a mental health condition. That can just be someone who's struggling with homelessness and needs resources and needs direction.
Yeah, very helpful to get that. And I know we committed a lot of time of the call there, but it's an important role. And I know one of the takeaways and successes earlier in the year in response to this is that working closely between the city and Intrum, you know, the whole mental health component, very important. So the only other piece, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Steve, the only thing I was going to say is that that, those, the outreach staff have been incredibly successful in their goals as well. So they have very specific goals set out by the City of Salinas. And halfway through the contract year, they've met all the goals already for the full contract year. So that tells you a lot about the work that they're doing. They're trying, they're not just trying to engage people, they are actively engaging people, and they're meeting those goals that are set out.
Yeah, and I have heard that certainly, and I don't think anybody's here from community development from the city, but I've been in close contact with Megan and another partner, Tina La Pearl, as it relates to the city deploying hand washing restrooms, doubling down on the navigation center, which has opened and has fifteen beds, showers. You know, I think to Gabe's point, you know, it's been hard, and it's only going to be more challenging on the other side of this, because encampments that are squatting on private property or in a dangerous way with, say, Union Pacific, there's going to be more to deal with there. But the navigation center that had been spoken about back at our first meeting is operational, and that's a real success. It was actually open ahead of schedule. And there may be more that comes up, because I do want to allocate some time now from hearing from our various stakeholders. I think Maria is on the call, and before I do that, Maria, are you able to just speak to Downtown Streets team? I know that things are suspended right now, but I know you're very much still working. We may, yeah, she's on here. Maria, do you want to comment a little bit on Downtown Streets team?
Are you guys able to hear me now? I was having some issues with my old computer. I was like, ah! So, yes, so I mean, before COVID, we were super active. We launched our downtown team in January, and they were extremely useful in regards to being able to contact and, you know, have initial contact with those experiencing homelessness and being kind of a little problematic with different entities there. And, you know, our case managers also have been working with Intrum before this whole COVID started. So when it happened, we stopped operations for our team members to go out there and beautification projects. However, our staff and myself have been actively working with our team members and those who have, you know, called us for assistance and direction. And we were able to employ about seven people within the month of COVID. So, I mean, we were still able to make connections and, you know, talk to landlords and employers for our team members to kind of move back into self-sufficient. So Donna, maybe you and I can connect, you know, once we start back in operation, which is going to look like maybe in, you know, two weeks, and we can do outreach specifically in Cayuga, because it's super close from our office where we have in downtown. So maybe I can help you around those aspects. And also within downtown, we have been working closely with Pastor Steve, which now has allowed us for our team members to take their break there. So we have been really engaged, and of course, a lot of our team members have been assisting the city with those washing stations and restrooms and, you know, engaging with people at the tracks and in Chinatown as their efforts for getting, you know, the services that they need or if they need any type of, you know, housing assisting or motel vouchers, which we have done a lot of referrals to different agencies that currently have them, and they have been doing the assessments. So we, I mean, we have been really productive. And for those of you, and I should have started this at the beginning, who don't know what our program is, Downtown Streets team is a work-experience-volunteer program that prepares folks experiencing homelessness to get into those transitional goals, which is employment and housing, by preventing them from doing that. And in return for case management and services, housing navigation, and basically stipends, they volunteer beautifying their community four hours a day, up to five days a week, Monday through Friday. So, you know, we encourage them to also gain responsibility and rebuild those soft skills and grassroots that they need for them to move forward.
Thank you for that background. I've done my best to kind of record some notes here. And we really do look forward to your coming back online. Having employed those seven individuals, those are individuals that may have been previously homeless, right?
Those seven individuals have been homeless for years.
Gosh, that's great.
Been working with them since we, since they joined the team. And we have, you know, all barriers that they have been as vital docs or, you know, drug addiction or mental health, you know, we have connected them to the appropriate services, and we're like there with them. We just don't send them off. We go to their appointments and make sure that they're getting the services that they need. And, you know, there are seven people that have been employed for over ninety days. So we don't count someone as being employed until they meet that ninety-day mark, basically. And then we were also able to house, impermanent housing, three folks within this whole COVID situation. So, I mean, we're working as hard as we can, we're, you know, working around services that have been shut down, like Andy was mentioning earlier. You know, we, I mean, we're trying to work with whoever is currently in operation.
Yeah, half the battle on this call is the coordinating and the networking, so that a Donna and a Maria can connect, a Gabe and a Robert or an Amy Graeme's can connect and so forth. So very helpful. Transitioning into just some stakeholder reporting out, I'm very anxious to hear from Gail Delory. You know, she's been a point of contact for the BKP building, that's what I call it. But, you know, certainly the neighborhood on a day-by-day basis. So I don't know, your observations, Gail, and I know COVID-19 throws everything kind of into this weird place, but since our last meeting, some of the good, some of the needs improvement. Gail, you like to comment at all?
Yeah, I would, Steve. First of all, it kind of does break down into the before COVID and the after COVID, because after the meeting, I felt like we were making some real meaningful progress. I know Pastor Steve, I appreciate so much the extra efforts that you guys had done after that meeting to ensure that there was more patrolling, things were really happening around our building area. It was being kept very clean. Any trash was always being picked up. We didn't have very, very little people hanging out in the parking garage, and I felt like it was a real, real plus. And then, of course, then COVID-19 hits, and, you know, normally, come April fifteenth, everybody in this building has their hair on fire, and we're all attempting to, you know, work, you know, twenty hours a week overtime, and we're here a lot. That did not happen this year, because we had so many people working remotely. So it's really hard for me to tell you. I'm here in this building a couple of times a day. I come in usually for a couple of hours in the morning and in the afternoon. Because we are an essential service, we still have to, you know, be open and functioning, but at a much reduced rate. But I can tell you from what I've seen, I saw one gentleman sleeping in our back porch, I want to say late last week, in a sleeping bag, but he's the only individual that I have seen. Again, I'm quantifying this by saying I haven't been here a lot. But I feel like there has been real improvement. And I'm really hard, sorry to hear Donna's comments about, you know, I think maybe they have not stuck around in this area for some reason, but have, you know, moved to Cayuga Street and surrounding neighborhoods. But really, I cannot say that there's been a huge problem at this building, which is right next door to the church. So for the limited amount of time that we're here, we usually have someone here at seven in the morning, and we lock the doors at five. We have no client traffic coming in at all right now. So we don't, we aren't seeing anybody face-to-face at this point. But what I have seen on the exterior looks really good to me.
Well, I appreciate the positiveness. You know, there's been, I serve on the Board for Community Human Services. We've heard a lot- We've, we've heard a lot about, and just as interim, I'm sure has experienced, you know, the client volume, just due to the impediment to reach, say, clients is, you know, is changed. It's gone down in many respects. I think COVID-19 has driven some homeless and at-risk individuals into service. You know, speaking with Jesse at the, at the shelter, you know, there's very strict oversights, even Pastor Ken at Victory Mission is to, you know, if you'll be allowed in, again, if you leave per se. So I think some of those things have driven, driven some compliance. But still, to Donna's point, we have work to do. And again, half the battle is this sort of network and some of the takeaways. I didn't want to leave Pat Donohue out. If there was anything you wanted to add, Pat? You know, from the perspective of a church leader, volunteer and supporter, I mean, you've, you've been at all of these meetings. Is there anything you'd like to add at all, Pat?
No, I just, our leadership council is taking this topic very seriously in our discussions with Pastor Steve and our Neighborhood Services Manager. That's led to our making a decision to enclose the patio and the porches. So we're doing all we can to keep the area safe and be good neighbors.
Excellent. And I was very encouraged to hear about the enclosing of that patio. You know, I know the YMCA can speak to making sure that fence is high enough. I know you, they had had some problems, people coming over the fence, but I'm sure you're, you're taking the right measures and the recording as well. With that in mind, there's a few stakeholders that weren't able to attend. I do want to note SCCIA, the Downtown Overlay District Board. And one of the double backs that I'll commit to is making sure that there are connections and they're aware. I mean, I think as I put in my notes, I'm attempting to record this so I can share a link at a later time to the stakeholders so that everybody can, can be brought up to speed as to what everybody's doing. We'll see if that works. But I think, you know, just sort of making sure that there's time for any other comments that anybody else wants to add as to takeaways, conclusions. I mean, I think I've been, I've been doing my best to note what, what important next steps, including, you know, Donna as to the neighborhood. Is there anything anybody else would like to add at this time before, before we bring it to close?
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Can I, can I just ask Pastor Lundin some questions really quick, just to get a better idea of what's going on here?
I'll mean.
I know you serve two meals. Is that correct? Are you still serving the two meals?
Breakfast and lunch.
Okay, what, what times are you serving those meals?
Breakfast is 7:00 to 8:00.
Okay.
And lunch is 11:30 to 12:30.
Okay. What are you doing about the, like, the folks that are hanging out, like, on your church steps? Like, at, you know, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon as I drive by? And, you know, I notice there's people that actually, the people experiencing homelessness are actually kind of chilling on your property. Is there, is there somebody on site all the time that helps? Or do you, is that something you welcome? Is that, I'm just trying to get a feel for why they're congregating right there? Meal times?
We close at 1:00. And we often walk around the building and move people along. It's an easy place to sit down. It's, 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 it's constant, difficult work. That, that's one of the reasons that we're enclosing the porch area on the San Luis side and, and, and the courtyard on the Lincoln side. But, yeah, people are around that, around that area, you know. A problem, maybe a hidden negative to us getting a little tougher on our hours and when we're closed and now enclosing certain areas is that there are chronically homeless people in the area that will, they'll wander into other places. You may be asking us to stay open longer, yeah, have people on our porches.
I'd rather have them on your porch than mine.
Yeah, I'm sure you would.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to get, you know, since it's quiet in the neighborhood right now, I can actually get a feel for this traffic, you know? So I'm going to pay attention to these meal times and see if I'm noticing like patterns, you know? So I can like, okay, they're leaving lunch, they're leaving breakfast, you know, they're in between. Who's talking?
Oh, sorry, that was, that was Officer Carby, I think. No, no problem. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Any response there, Pastor?
Yeah, well, keep in mind that it's possible that they're not coming from our place, too. That, you know, you're, you're much closer to the warming shelter. And, you know, it's, it's possible that they're not having meals at our place. I'd welcome a call from you if, if there's someone who's chronically around your place. I'll go over and take a look.
Yeah.
And see who it is. Or I could just get a picture or get my security footage, I guess, and, and, and say, hey, this, this one's extra friendly.
Yeah, those photos go a long way. I can't tell you how many times both allied security and, well, as Officer Carby alluded to, those photos help tremendously. So that's, that's good. Anything else, Donna, before we bring it to close? I want to make sure we, we close on time.
No, I just wanted to watch those meal times to see if I can justify the extra traffic or figure out what's going on in this neighborhood over here. So we're good. I'll go back on mute.
All right. Well, just kind of wrapping things up, I want to thank everybody for attending. You know, this meeting started months ago with violence and a real uptick in safety and health concerns. And I know COVID-19's thrown a, you know, wrench in all of this. But generally speaking, the city, the service providers on the call, the church, the various stakeholders, all committed reasonably to a number of remedies. And I think we saw results with our first meeting. And here we are again to report on some other results and some other challenges and follow-up. The commitment last meeting was to meet again as needed. So depending on follow-up between the various stakeholders, we'll, we may meet again, we may not need to. You know, I just want to applaud everybody for their efforts during these times, but on this important topic. So I will send notes out, and if this, if this recorded right and there's a link, I'll send that out so that everybody can, you know, be in the loop, because I know that there were some stakeholders that weren't able to attend. And just want to say thank you. So thanks to everybody for attending today, and stay safe out there, okay?